The Colombe de Order, 708. Welcome everyone. We're going to start right off with this wonderful presentation, MBU Local History Class. So we have Mr. Barney and a student with us here. So I would invite you up to...
Let me put you in the chair up here for him.
Yep, yep. I'm not sure if we're going to...
We can just...
Are you going to be up at Adam?
I'm going to be on camera.
So, thanks for having us. So, the local history class, when MBU moved towards embracing the PVGRs and the new grading system, we looked at our course offerings and in the social studies department, the local history class is kind of a combination of the old Native American history class and my own intense interest in local history. So last semester, there was one section of the course offered and this year there are five sections this semester with another two next semester. So it's probably one of the best courses that I've taught at the school. I'm really enjoying it. One of the students has taken the class, has been good enough to come on up and talk about some of the things that we're doing. So if you have questions for me, that's great, but questions to Ridge would probably give you a more accurate representation of us. What do you have for us?
Right here, I have an at-loud Christmas main by one of the students. I make this last year's... Last year's students. Native American tool that they use for hunting animals. So basically, you hold it like this. This is how they would hold it. There'd be a dart on the end of it, which obviously you put the arrow down.
No problem. I'll run over there.
Mr. Lawson, quit naming it.
It's volunteer, so you can demonstrate the throwing.
But yeah, so once it's on there, you hold it back like this and you hold the arrow in your fingers and you just step and throw. And you want to really just kind of turn your body and just put all your effort into your wrist. It's all yours, this latest thing to get distance. Actually made it at least probably four years ago and I never had any thought that I was going to be learning about in class.
So teaching, I've gotten really heavy into the archaeology and whether or not it's some of the stuff that's been uncovered on Monument Road or some of the stuff in Albert, some of the atladel material is stuff that archaeologists have dug up over the last 20 or so years. And in the class, we've also talked about some of the burial grounds we've had. I have made sure to reach out to the Abenaki community to make sure they're respecting their beliefs. But being on the Swanton Historical Society, try to make sure that we have a good relationship with them. And I've met with the Wildlife Refuge too. One of the things that I wanted to show you as far as the PowerPoint goes, and this is something that you guys are intimately involved in, is the idea of funding for field trips. I don't think I could do a very good job with students. This group hasn't had the opportunity to go on field trips. The first of the field trips are supposed to be planned for tomorrow. We'll see if the storm affects that or not, one way or the other. But when we get back from Thanksgiving break, I'd like to take these guys to a lot of field trips. The Swanton Historical Society, St. Albans Historical Society, the Highgate Historical Society. So we're not going to spend time just on this one, but if you want to... This is a presentation that I gave to the Swanton Historical Society about what the class is doing. I just focused in on French-Canadian history and the idea that this is what Quebec and Montreal looked like at one point in time, but if you want to go to the next slide. So one of the things that I'd asked for in the budget was some flint strikers. And we'll go outside with the students and try to get them to start fires the old-fashioned way. Another thing that I'd asked for and was able to get was some of the old bow drills. So if you're talking history, it's hands-on history, it's weighted by the kids involved. And I joked with the kids that we weren't going to do this until there was snow on the ground. So there'll be snow on the ground soon, so maybe taking the kids outside if you want to go ahead and keep going. So with the Swanton Historical Society, one of the other things that we try to do is focus in on primary sources. And Ron Kilburn has been really good about letting us take a look at some of the historical images. These are some students from last year when we visited the train depot and we visited the spot underneath the library. And if you want to go to the next slide. These are some of the historical images from Swanton. So this is Grand Avenue where there used to be a trolley car running up and down from St. Albans to the center of Swanton. And then this is unfortunately a bit of an eyesore in the community today, but this used to be the hotel, the Riviera, over on River Road. And one of the questions that these guys will answer and one of the questions that we'll talk about in class is, to what extent should we ask taxpayers to try to preserve some of this stuff? If something is old and not worth it anymore, do we make the decision to throw it away? And I think Swanton has decided to throw this away where there are other things that were trying to preserve. So go ahead. This is what the Riviera would have looked like from the inside in the 1920s. Certainly quite a bit of different view. So with technology, one of the other things that I try to do is get the students to research a historical time period. This was sort of a joke that I used to get the students to kind of visualize this. This is over at the Highgate Airport and I got on my back and we have a green screen here at school. The idea is to superimpose yourself into a historical image after having researched that image. So I can be a little slow with technology sometimes, so I need to develop this a little bit better, but this is the first effort. So go ahead. The other thing, I've really focused in on Abenaki history a lot. I just think it's the right thing to do. And one of the things we did last semester was to plant some of the seeds that the Abenaki community have been able to identify as heirloom seeds that would have been grown here in Highgate Swanton five or 600 years ago. So the plot was over by the Ag Department and the sowing was kind of hot, so the seeds didn't grow out as well as I would have liked, but we did get some and these guys had the opportunity to shove beans in class quite a bit. It's something that I want to continue to do with teaching with class longer. Just some more Abenaki stuff, the idea that we're focusing in on Mississauga Bay, but a bit some of the images for the atladel. I have used Google Maps a lot and trying to work on geography with the students. So I'm trying not to take up too much of your time, but give you guys a good idea of what the class is about. Go ahead. We don't have to... I hope you see one like that. So, and maybe I can finish up with this. This is something that I've really tried to focus in on the students. The idea of archaeology as a primary source, especially with the Refuge or some of my contacts from college. I would love the students to actually do archaeological digs. Do you guys recognize this area at all? Are you able to identify this section of the country?
That'd be the Swanton Dam or Far Lact or...
Yeah, so this would be the East Highgate Bridge and then this is the dam over here. So students are just barely, we just barely talked about this in class the other day. That's a fishing access unfortunately where a lot of locals dumped their trash on the Sisquid River, but the Set family owns this property here. And I believe this is Russo Road here. These are three archaeology digs that I've done in the 1990s and the students have worked with the information from those digs. It's something that I want to expand. Swanton has an extensive history with the War of 1812 and local property owners have allowed us to dig on their land looking for some historically significant things in our communities. So, do you guys have any questions? As a teacher, if I'm talking too much, I'll say something.
Sounds like a fun class.
Any questions over here?
You mentioned the War of 1812. I know you came by the house and Don, did you ever pursue that after that group of students?
Uh, yeah.
Looking for a long house or storage, ammunition storage?
So, Don Collins is asking, he was nice enough to host us for a dig, the War of 1812 in August of 1813. British soldiers camped at Isle of Mont and then came up McQuan shore and went over Lake Road, came into the village and they burned an American barracks. There were three barracks, each of them probably about 180 to 200 feet long on August 2nd or 3rd of 1813. And I'm such a geek on this stuff that I wanted to find it because it's not, the specific location has not been identified. So I'd love to throw out more property names, but I don't want to...
Well, I think we should go by Father Rob's place.
He's got a huge backyard.
I was going to say, if you find him digging in your backyard, I know he's... You guys would be invited on anything. Just to say, the other day, I saw Ridge the other day in the hallway and asked him if he was ready to come and give the presentation and he was just saying what a great class it is and, I mean, beaming from ear to ear, just, you know, about what a great class it is and how hands-on it is.
And I was a history major focusing on American and I've never seen that contraption with... So that's very cool. I learned something.
It's tricky to throw.
I would think it would be. It's like a javelin.
It's tricky to hang them at first, I'm sure.
The funny thing is, when you see some people throwing, especially some of the young guys, not Ridge, but some of the young guys will try to throw it really, really hard and in the process, they haven't practiced at all. Practice makes perfect. And they'll throw and they'll release a dart to really, and the atladel will come down and split the dart, or they'll release the atladel itself and it'll go into the ground. And it takes a little bit of coaching, but I think most of the students are proficient with it now, so.
Is that size accurate? Are they usually bigger or smaller?
It depends on what the ground is.
Yeah, these are probably a little bit smaller than what would have been used in history. But based on the archaeological evidence, not many of the actual darts remain. It's mostly some of the other components, like if they had stones on the pieces of wood, they'd be able to identify shapes and some of the oral traditions too. But they are probably a little bit larger than that.
The atladel itself, would it be longer?
Certainly the dart.
A little more leather?
Certainly the dart.
Very good.
Thank you for taking the time to come and show that to us. We're going to talk about your class.
But if I can make one more pitch, on the budgetary side of this, relationships are everything and in order for the students to go to the Wildlife Refuge, in order for us to go to the Historical Societies, the funding for the buses matters a lot. In order to get the students to the location, that costs a lot, quite a bit of money. And you guys have supported that so far. Last year, we had one field trip that went down to the Maritime Museum and students stood on the Philadelphia. As a matter of fact, I think one of the last photos in the PowerPoint. You can probably scroll through the next five or six. Yeah, we do do some stuff for the missile silos here in the location in Highgate, sorry, in Swanton and Albert as well, the nuclear missile silos from the Old World.
Well, not at the Maritime Museum. Tell me when you stop.
Keep going. It'll be a ship. You'll be like, oh yeah, there it is. Yeah, this is up at Mississauga Bay by Rock River, some War of 1812 stuff. If you want to learn about it, come to class with us. This is, yeah, down at the Maritime Museum. They were great. They let us go on to Philadelphia and I think students get more from a trip like this than some of the stuff that I would show in class, so.
It's a great museum. It's a great opportunity for kids. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and sharing your knowledge. Sounds like you're doing something good there, Mr. Barney.
Thank you for not saying anything about my... How can I...
I was going to say that, but it was actually a session. All right. As long as we're in presentation mode, we do have our athletic director here and I guess he's, I guess he's next on the agenda anyways. So I would welcome, whoops, more Russian.
Trying to figure out how to throw them out.
I don't have darts though.
We have the dart.
So we've got John Lumson, our athletic director with us and my understanding is we're going to report maybe on the fall sports season and what's happening.
Yep, so I'm going to do a review of our fall season. This year, we're the 313 fall athletes participating on 18 teams. The high school season started on Thursday, August 16th. High school athletes and parents were invited to a barbecue. Rick Farnham, retired UVM athletic director, is a resource that I, as well as my coaches, use throughout the year. Rick presented to students what the athletic experience is about. He also presented a program on hazing, harassment, and bullying. And then later that evening, our parents, players, and coaches had team meetings. Rick then was invited back to our school to present a hazing, harassment, and bullying presentation to our middle school athletes. And I also talked to our middle school athletes about expectations of academics, behavior prior to the first day of practice. This summer, our homecoming committee met several times to discuss the pep rally and homecoming. Night games took place the week of September 17th through the 22nd. All middle school and high school teams had night games. This year, the homecoming committee decided to add a parade to the week event. This parade took place down First Street and ended at the Swanton Police Department. Teams were then bussed back to MBU for soccer games, a dance, and fireworks. A couple of events that happened this year at our school. This year, MBU was the host site for the NBAC High School Cross Country Meet where 600 runners from 19 schools participated. Both middle and high school teams had fall awards. Several of our athletes were recognized for making all league and all-state teams. This fall, we had a new athletic trainer. Sam Messenger is a graduate from UVM and he brings knowledge and compassion to our athletes. He performed 97 evaluations, which includes cuts, sprains, and strains. This is compared to 70 last year during the same time. He also performed 162 treatments, which includes wrapping of ankles and rehab programs for our athletes. Winter signups have begun. There are 219 athletes participating on 15 middle and high school teams. Something new for our middle school students is they have the opportunity to participate in middle school dance. My varsity coach wanted to invest her time in giving our middle school students the opportunity to participate in that program. This past Monday, I had a winter coaches meeting. Farnham presented to coaches a 45-minute presentation on legal and ethical responsibilities of coaching and also coaches participated in AED and CPR training. Dan Palmer, myself, took 13 student athletes to the Vermont Leadership Conference in Burlington. Many of these athletes will be part of the homecoming pep rally committees. I recently met with the student pep band director to discuss their schedule and they have told me that they will be including several playings at several boys' and girls' hockey games this winter. Mr. Palmer gave me a list of questions that I need to report back to you. One was the track project. The track, as you know, has been resurfaced with rock finds and conditioner. The long jump area is done and our next projects would include putting in a concrete pad for both the shot put and area as well as a pad for the javelin area. Football, our varsity team participated in five games this year. Because of low turnout, we had to forfeit the rest of the season. Moving forward, my coach and I traveled to a state football meeting at Hartford High School last night. After many conversations with my coach and his staff, along with members of the football committee, MBU will be an 11-man JV program next year. Chad and his staff and players have fundraised thousands of dollars to continue this program. This year, the team had golf and cornhole tournaments. They also did a gold card fundraising. They received some grant money from the Football Foundation and they received monetary donations from a craft show as well as community members. I also have here with me a sports medicine and emergency action plan. These documents were started last fall and were completed this summer and I have a couple of copies if you would like to just look around or pass them around. And lastly, it has been a rewarding experience to work on the gymnasium project. Thank you for trusting me and others to make this gymnasium the best in Vermont. And lastly, there's a winter pep rally on Monday, November 26th at 1:30 where all of you are invited because I know the staff and students will be invited as well. I know I tossed out a lot of information, so if you want to go back.
The 26th is our grand reopen and that's when we're going to open it back up to all the students and staff that day. It'll be kind of a recognition of all the fall sports and the winter athletes coming up as well.
You mentioned the pep band playing hockey games?
Yes.
Has that ever happened?
That has never happened and one thing that I only spoke to my student directors, that's something that's what we want to do. Obviously, if it's really, really cold outside, it can probably not happen, but they're going to do their best and we have actually sat down and looked at that schedule and we have some, some games where they're going to come in and play. So it's exciting.
Anything else for John?
Yeah. The gym floor, you know? I've heard a lot of people talking about how great it is. A few people have been in there and, but I think there's one concern and I think as a board, we missed it. And I think we need a mat. When baseball, softball starts, not a tire, we need a mat so they can hit balls, so they're not leaving them waiting dishes and... I think that's something that I'm going to bring it up to the board and I think that's something we've got to invest in because, you know, there's certain things that, you know, that floor does look very young, you know? All the guys went through them and I've heard stories that that's probably right now the best gym in the state at all and I think, I think we've got to keep it that way. You know, I think we've got some pride there and I think whatever, if it takes $6,000 to cover that floor, I think it's worth it, you know?
Paul and I met today and we're talking about when we go back from the break that we're going to sit down and go to, I know Inisburg is a school that has one, so we're looking to maybe visit, find out what works, taking our time and finding out what's the right product to put on that floor.
But I'm hoping there's something in place by the time spring sports come around and, you know, so we're not having, you know, that's...
The final coke gets put on tomorrow afternoon.
You know, to the untrained eye, I never noticed that there were any ball mires in that floor. Were they, they were all over?
Well, it does where the batting cages are and stuff like that, it's because where they're continuously hitting.
You can get them off.
You'll get white spots where those softballs are.
You can get them off, but you've got to work at it. I've been there, did for 18 years.
Okay, I didn't want to make sure it was a real problem before we...
It is a real problem.
Dennis, I have a question.
Yeah.
And I don't know if this is the place tonight or something else, but at some point, I would like to hear from you as the AD on the process you do to evaluate your coaches. Because as a member of the community, I hear some excellent things about some of the coaches. In the community, I also hear things that concern me as a former school administrator about some of the coaches. And I don't want to depend on what I hear at the local Hannafords or whatever, but I would like to know the process so that when something does come up, that as a board member, I know if we're doing the proper thing so that if we have someone who is not maybe reaching the standards that we have as expectations, that we know the process and how it's handled, both positive and things that need to be addressed. So I don't know you and Julie and Dennis or whoever can schedule, but I'd like to, as a board member, I may not be here to sit there and talk to Julie, but at some point, I'd like to hear from you about it.
That's something that's been discussed in the past as well, which is, I think the process was important. You ironed out so that it could be followed with the reception because more things are best for you.
Get that feedback still.
And how, and how it's communicated, obviously the personnel issue, you know, that's very sensitive, but how that's communicated to, when there's an issue, how it's communicated and worked through with the folks that are concerned.
Not that we don't want John back, but it's probably information that could come back through administration as well. If that's some sort of information to share with the board, it could come from you, it could come from that. Any other comments for John?
Yeah, and there's something, you're hearing in the smaller schools, other sports coming around. You hear like volleyball. Have you heard much about that? And the other one that I'm hearing a lot of lately is bowling.
Not much on bowling, but I will let you know that last year, we had a student that participated in bowling, however, that this person, we did a member-to-member with Inisburg. This year, I have two Alpine skaters that are going to participate as independents at BFA St. Albans, which means they practice, they go on their own, they pay for their own equipment, but they're at least with a coach, with the BFA St. Albans, and then they ski as an independent. The biggest news, if you've heard on this fall, was bass fishing. That's what I'm hearing. So obviously, this is a discussion that I'm going to have with the board soon is to what sports do we want to have? Where are we, where do we go with football? Where are we going to go with bass fishing? Volleyball, every year I hear volleyball, but never eight, 10 kids that really want to play. It would probably start as a co-ed, it would probably start as a club. That's what, that will happen if we decide to do that. So I am more than happy to look into creating opportunities for our kids to participate in other sports.
You know, do you kind of wait for the kids to show interest in something before...
Yeah, I look for them to show some interest, but I need more than just one.
All right.
So, and then of course, the funding of these sports and how we fund sports, so.
You know, something else, I think it's a fall more than, more than spring is this frisbee stuff. There's disc golf and there's ultimate frisbee and I think those are relatively inexpensive sport.
What about lacrosse?
I haven't heard much from lacrosse, but a lot of this fall was the bass fishing that really took off and 12 schools participated in that. They have two tournaments, one halfway through the year and the other one's another state tournament towards the end of the year. And what they do is you invite, you know, St. Albans, Inisburg, and Richard. You would say, hey, we're going to be at Campbell's Bay, here's where we're going to fish today and just practice, you know, techniques and so on. Not really a tournament, we're just going to fish on the side of the bank. But for these other two tournaments that are with the state, they have Vermont Fishing Game, like, you know, people go out onto the boats, you tell them where to go, the drivers go out onto the boats and they'll take them where they want to go, supervise with Vermont Fishing Game people and so on. So it's a great opportunity for our student athletes and it was, I didn't know, but one person said to me that one, he was, I'd say, he was in seventh place in the state right now. He must be doing some type of other tournament, not through the high school. So that'd be something that we could pursue, you know, later this, next couple of months, next couple of months.
Do you think it's possible by 2020 to host a home meet year in Sisqo?
It is possible, but the probably biggest piece of equipment that you're missing is bolt vaulting.
And that's 19,000?
Anywhere between 15,000 and 20,000. So that's a pretty big, and storing the equipment in a safe, reliable area where critters and people can't get to it. So that might be a bigger concern first than then looking at that. I thought the track came up great. The long jump area came up great. The lung jump area came up great. We talked about, you know, having built a 10 by 10 concrete pad. I had the Mr. Paydies group do that this fall. However, there wasn't enough time this fall for you to do that. So it's probably something that we're going to look to do either next spring or wait till summer to do that. A pad for the concrete, a 10 by 10 pad for shot put area. Those dimensions are that right down at the event. So I just took dimensions and said, here's what I need.
Shot put business.
Yep. But it's not pole vault.
Yeah, that's, you know. And even if, I know I've been to some meets where pole vault, you know, some schools the size of us here, canceled the pole vault, had everything else, you know. And it comes down to that, you know. But, you know, I'd like to see us try to set a goal for 2020 to have a home meet here.
As we do during the A.C. quest hunting. It's just a great opportunity to show off our school. And it's been a nice one that leaves charming and I think we've put on a good show.
Thank you, Richard.
Want to save this for you?
Yeah, I'll circle it those.
And then you give back to Dan. Thank you. Any other questions?
John, the JV football. How long is that? Is that one year at a time?
It's one year at a time alignment. Yep, yep. So, you know, if you remember back three years ago, Winiski dropped out of varsity football. And then we were asked to go in and join. And we weren't ready. And it continues to show that we're not ready of the skills, the fundamentals that you've been taught. So we're just going to go back. I have a great coach and a great coaching staff. And if it's one person that can make this program happen, it's going to be Chad. He has nine freshmen this year that participated. I know his numbers are going to get bigger. He's just a great, you know, character person. And we'd be happy with him. Great role model for kids and people that hang around him. And I think when that fire, I think, gets out there, that this is a great coach, this is going to be a great team. But we're just not bigger, kids are just bigger, stronger and faster than we are right now.
Is there, John, is there, you know, you see like Burlington and South Burlington come bowling. Is there any way like Richmond, Inisburg, Siskiyou?
So I've been in contact with both athletic directors of Richmond and Inisburg to ask if anyone wants to come in and come down and be part of our program. Last year, there was a student from Inisburg. But he was able to go to Fairfax, that's where he has been going. I've been in contact with both athletic directors. In fact, we plan on going up sometime early spring to talk to those athletes who might think about coming here at the Siskiyou. And looking to do member to members. If we just grab, you know, two or three kids from up there, we'd be, my coaches would be very excited. So, yep, we're doing everything we can. And that's the only direction that we can go is up that way. But I do see that happening. And we'll do all we can to get those kids down here and, you know, obviously, Kirkland, wherever it might be. My coach is really after those kids up there. So, boy, if you know of anyone, Richard, you know, set us up with meeting with a parent and so on. And also their student.
Let's say the box looking.
Get out players. Bass fishing.
Yeah. Excited about that one.
I am excited about that one. Kids thought that if they were going to go out on a boat by themselves, that was the money part. Put like $30,000 for the bass boat next year. We're just sick of the worms.
Yeah, there we go.
Thank you for your ride. Bye, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John. All right. I think we're all done our presentations. We're going to go back to the beginning. Public comments regarding current and future agendas. We had a public, I guess you like. I don't think you had any comments. There are no other comments. We're going to go to adopting the minutes of 10:23, October 23rd meeting. I have a make fun of me. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes on October 23rd, 2018. Do you hear that motion?
Oh, thank you.
Motion by Greg, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Father Ron. Any discussion, questions, comments, concerns? Hear none. All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye. All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. All right. This brings us to facility update. And I think we're going to ask Mr. Greg about the facility update.
Okay, so as John is talking about, the gym is, the project is wrapping up. They're going to be putting the vinyl coating on the floor tomorrow. We're going to be letting that set up over the Thanksgiving holiday. And turning it back over to the school in the 20s. There's going to be a few odds and ends left to do as far as some outlets and things as far as lighting goes. But we can do those throughout school and stuff like that. So I don't want to interfere with how gyms run and stuff. So that's a positive thing right there. This is a timeline for the monvol construction process. And, yeah, Richard's messing with it. Everybody else had one on this side. And so. So we started out with, the first part of the project was hiring a construction manager. And Julie, Don, Dan, Kimmy Duff, and I were part of that process. And we did select the E.W. as the construction manager for the project. And they came up with a timeline. And so this kind of puts us on schedule for how the project is going to be quoted. And how it's going to lay out for the duration of, I believe, six months. So they have a pretty stringent timeline. And so if we can do it in that time, I think would be great. Because that would put us into 2019 for completion.
Not very far away.
It's not very far away. We're actually planning on probably giving them the wood chip boiler area and stuff like that. Probably mid, early March, mid-March. And then mid-April, we'll probably be fencing off a bus school, changing our routing to J-Pod. And we'll be well on our way at that time.
Is there a lot of ground prep work to do for the wood chip boiler addition? I haven't really.
Well, there's going to be crosswalk footings, stuff like this.
As far as still, or is it?
No, it's actually, probably some stuff is going to come out actually from where we're at. We're going to have to do an amendment to our stormwater permit. And redo a little bit of excavating out at the end of J-Pod and things like that. But that'll all be part of the permitting process. Any questions on any of this, or?
Ballistic glazing systems.
Ballistic glazing systems?
Yeah, we got some slippery glass.
Yes, that's exactly what's going to get down that front lobby. So there's actually, part of that process was, we were lucky enough to get a $25,000 grant to help assist into that part of it from the state of Vermont. And we're actually looking at putting an extended dust view oil. So that we'll actually have a place that's heated so that people will be buzzed in. So that they won't actually have access to the front of the building. And that's a number seven rating for ballistic rating, which is 5.56 round.
I mean, how comfortable were they on the schedule?
They feel very comfortable that Dan and I and Julie were there talking with them, you know. And they seem very com-. Of course, B.W. is a large enough company, so they have a lot of pushing. And able to get vendors in and things like this. So I believe that they can do the project in the timeline that they specified.
And if they don't?
Well, that's what I was just going to say. We didn't work any penalty phases out of this for days or weeks beyond the deadline. About the only deadline that we actually gave them was it needed to be completed before 2020.
Their timeline was definitely the most rigorous scheduled. And we know it's a big piece in our favor.
I just don't see any contingency areas in this. So I don't know if they built in some of that to each one of these. Or, I mean, sometimes in the timeline, they'll actually put block chunks for contingency. Which I don't see in some of the spurs.
I'm thinking that they felt comfortable enough. Because this is really, it looks like a large project to us. But in reality is, is this is not a huge project.
It's a small project.
It's a very small project.
That's one of the questions I asked because, you know, nobody's looking at 40, 50 million dollar projects or more.
70.
Yeah, I'm a salary 100 million dollars for this. There's some local people overseas.
Yep. I can't remember the superintendent's name, but he was in high date.
One guy, Todd Corrier.
Todd Corrier. And then we've got Tim Heinlein that is.
Georgia.
Georgia, he was a St. Albans native. He was really younger than I was in school, he went to BFA. And so he's local.
It is nice that the person who will be here first and here last every day is right here in town. And it's, I don't know, there seemed to be, it was a very good process. But it seemed like a very good team. The people that Dan and Jay and Jen will be working with every day, that was a really solid team.
So part of the process, the report back to the board was probably every board meeting, the superintendent and I will give a board report. And probably what we'll do is maybe every other meeting, we'll have Tim Heinlein come in as a project manager and specify directly where we are in the phase of project.
They were very willing and very eager to come on in and talk to us.
Now, Paul, could you talk a little bit about gym addition?
Okay, so what that gym addition is, is we've got a great gym down there, but there's no storage. So I started the conversation with Lehman Lanthir. And told them that, you know, what our concern was. And asked them if there was anything that we could do about putting addition outside the gym. And so we've come up with a place for a new weight room, facilities, I mean, athletic trainer and ice room for the ice machine. And so the thing is, is we're going to look at the project that we actually, all we're voting on, voted on and stuff like this. But if there's room, money left over after the project, we're looking at actually doing that expansion project for gym storage.
So you're saying that the old weight room will be the storage?
The old weight room will be the storage. There'll be a larger boosters booth. And then what there'll be is there'll be a new weight room designed so that they'll be able to have both the weightlifting equipment and there'll be a aerobic section for physical health.
So do you have any prices on what that would?
We don't. Those prices are going to come back in, I think it's December. Project development estimates and stuff. So we're going to be looking at probably around 11/29. So that's going to be the 29th of this month. We'll start looking at some figures and stuff. But their actual budgeting process, their fine bid package process will take place what's like 1/7 of 19 for that project and bid review.
So in other words, everything should be done in that gym, but those locker rooms, right? And they're pretty sore. You know, that's another, you know, you know, they, I think they've taken a beating in the last 50 years.
You know, the thing is, is it's not just in 50 years. There's some issues down there because we put in ceiling tiles and they punch around and stuff like this. I mean, last year, we spent over $5,000 replacing tiles down there. And so what we are going to be doing is looking at alternative ceilings so that either it will be steel reinforced studs with maybe cement board or something like this.
This is just concrete.
Yeah, so we're looking at those ideas because it's just not cost effective the way we're going. And the lockers, that's a different thing altogether. We repair the lockers, fix the lockers and.
It's a never ending battle.
It's a never ending battle. And I don't know the answer for that. And so that's why a lot of times, why the locker rooms by the end of the year or mid part of the year were terrible.
Is this schedule supposed to capture equipment specs and retimes? Like the children?
Right, yes, that's all incorporated into here.
Which one of these captures that? I'm just curious when they're going to spec those.
So they already spec all the equipment out. The piercing is both the electrical contractor and the H.B.A.C. contractor or engineers. And so they've already specified all the equipment and stuff there. And they, they're working on the week time form right now.
If that's the three, are you talking to Rachel Ron?
We have, we've got Rachel on. She's not naming the meetings, but we're sharing all of our board minutes, our meeting minutes with her. And she's going to be part of the processes and starting.
If there's specs, I'm sure you can send us to you.
Because there's a huge payback with efficiency remark for the ice bank storage and stuff like this. So that's going to be a huge part because we're going to be deferring our peak demand load to evening. And so it's not daytime. So yes, we are working efficiency remark, something out of very closely.
So you talked about designing that gym addition. But if there's no money at the end of the project, it's not going to happen, you know, probably. Unless we fund it some of it.
Unless we can fund it some other way. And if we can't fund the money, we should really look seriously how to fund that. Because right now, we have enough storage for the gym.
I don't argue it's an important thing. But right now, we're planning on using any money if there's some left at the end.
Correct, that's.
What about a capital reserve? Where are we with having to spend that?
Well, so the thing is, is the capital reserve doesn't really cover an addition to the building. So and then. So, and then, of course, we'd use some capital reserve for a lot of this project here we've done in the gym, so I'll have to work with Laura very closely to figure out where we are and what we're doing because in 2021, we're gonna be recording this roof, and I get an idea, the estimates are gonna come in, over four hundred dollars.
What I was thinking was, if we get to the end of the project and there's enough money to do a third of it or something, we might wanna go up to orders at town meeting and ask if we could use a designated portion of the reserve.
Very possible, we could do it if we're getting into that part of it. We could actually put separate articles to that one specific item.
Just not asking for new money, but to use the money that's already in the capital project, so just something to keep in mind.
No, I agree, you know, Dennis, you know, I know we need that addition, you know, and I think we had this discussion in Hygie about Hygie, you know, we had this assessment and stuff, but now all of a sudden we're finding things out, you know, and one of the big things that came up, you know, we've got that track started. I think we need to get that finished, you know, you know, I know, I think I'm being prejudiced or whatever, but not really. But I, you know, and I agree we need an addition down there, but I think we missed, you know, I listened to Laura talk in Hygie and the idea with assessment was to get everything because you can't get a bond down the road. Are we on the same page, Laura?
Listen, Richard. You were listening, Richard.
You know, and but, you know, I think we can't, we kinda, I think we gotta be careful now, I think, you know.
Yeah, we said that when we built it, we added money because we didn't want to be going back to taxpayers in two or three years from that.
Right.
We said that time and time again.
But I don't know, I guess what I'm saying from listening to what you told us in Hygie, did we at MBU, did we go far enough? Or should have we? I remember sitting here cutting corners, but should have we cut the corners? You know, you know what I'm saying, no?
No, because I don't think at the end we did. In fact, I think we had a hard time convincing the board, because you and I were a couple of them, and said, well, go for it. Remember the superintendent said much weight and things, but if Becky was here, I think she would tell us that we tried to originally stay within a timeframe that gave us the same bond payment, and at the end we didn't do that, we went beyond that. We had another quarter million dollars.
It is always a balance, so yes, you're right that you wanna encompass as much as you can, but you also can only push the envelope so far, you want your bond to pass.
Right.
And if you go too high and too short, you know, then you're sacrificing the entire bond.
I think we had that discussion, I think there were people on the board who thought maybe that, we did ask for too much, but we were lucky, we made it. A good year last year.
And sometimes in twenty years' time that you have a bond, sometimes priorities change, and sometimes you might need something more than you didn't really expect on. And so those are challenging things, but the taxpayer's been very supportive of the school, and if we have to put a small separate article in, they have been very supportive of the school, especially the construction parts of this and keeping the building up and on it.
And if it's not new money, seems to be pretty agreeable.
Well, what's that?
As if not new money, it seems to be pretty agreeable.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have to be careful, like Paul said, the roof project is coming and that's, we won't be able to dip too deeply into that.
Yeah, so that's something maybe, I don't know what's going on next week down in the central office, but maybe the week after, you and I can start talking about where we are with capital and room and stuff.
I think one of the really good things that I've felt coming out of the meeting with the construction people was that, you know, they're gonna get the bids out early. I always felt on the jobs I did, I need to let people know in November or something that I'm gonna be going to bid in the spring early, you know, late, late winter, early spring, and I think they've done that in the meeting when we questioned them, you know, they can get the word out right now that we're gonna be putting bid documents out. Because any contractor that's as big as they are, you know, they don't plan to work for next week, they plan for 2020. And so we're in the scope of hopefully getting some pretty decent prices and stuff.
And I'm sure that they've called a few of their favorite contractors to let them know this project is coming. Any other questions or anything else, or?
We'll add more as the projects start.
It'll keep growing as we start starting the project and stuff. All right, we'll see y'all later, have a good evening, have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, Paul, you too.
Dennis, can we record the minutes of thank you to Jim Sullivan for those wonderful pumpkins and kinda out of his own garden that we brought last time? I just think they were very nice, it was a nice touch.
That was very nice, and you did, yeah.
I speak for myself, but I think I can speak for the board.
Yeah, definitely.
We recorded the minutes. That wasn't the minutes. Was it the minutes last time?
It was.
I didn't see that.
It was so appreciated.
Bring to us, yeah.
We ended, we ended our meeting with that, I believe.
So I forgot, we set the gym to come all up, so I'm gonna leave Dan my key, if you guys wanna go down and check it out. We've got the divider curtain down, the batting cages all set up, we've got the backstops all down, ready to go, so if you guys wanna go check it out when you get done. That's the one done by F1.
You gotta take our shoes off?
I think you're good. We'll see y'all later.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Now, now we're just anticipating going to the gym, so who wants to get back to the meeting, right? I don't know. Let's see what's left on the meeting here. Looks like a financial update, so we've got check warrants and then we've got some talk about a draft budget, so I guess we might just well deal with the check warrants, it's their first on the list. We do have a check warrant report right in front of me, so I would entertain a motion to approve check warrant report for the dates October 13th, 2018 to November 9th, 2018. And the amount, oh my gosh, I don't even know if I can read a number that big.
I would say--
One million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. Did you get that? Okay. All right, I would entertain that motion, I have that motion.
What was the motion?
Motion by John, so John's the one that wants to spend the money. We blame him. Seconded by Vicky, thank you very much. Any discussion? John reviewed every single one and--
Yes.
Do you have more questions?
No.
Okay.
I reviewed it line by line.
Yes, and there was, yeah, it's a thick packet for sure. If there's no other comments, then all agree with the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. We'll circulate that for signatures.
And the F120, budget draft two. All right. So, if you recall, last month I brought you budget draft one, primarily salary and benefit projections. This one is primarily, your assessment numbers have now been updated. So if we're looking at, sorry, I think it's page six, you'll notice under Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union, it says your central office SU assessment has been updated to draft one that was proposed to the Franklin Northwest Board, and then the special ed SU assessment, which includes the admin costs, all of the special ed costs except for paraprofessionals, speech and psychological costs as well in that assessment. And again, those are just draft ones, but as, as different drafts are presented to the Franklin Northwest Board, I also represent them here. Other than that, if we turn a few more pages, to the last page under, sorry, second to the last page, under your special project water line, you'll notice in the farthest column that has been zeroed out for fiscal year 20, that was just a placeholder for the current year for the water line project. But that has been replaced and then some with, on the next page, on page nine, with your renovation debt service, and that would be your first bond payment this year. The current year fiscal year 19, you're paying interest only on your bond, which is always the case with a municipal bond, but next year you'll be responsible for principal and interest payment, so that's about two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in your debt service line there. Other than those changes, since your first draft, I believe we might have some personnel contractual issues that may be, that are suited for executive session.
Yes, I agree, you're right. Well, no, Laura, so we will continue this discussion, although we can continue this discussion now, but we will finish this discussion in the executive session. Are there any other questions on, I guess, those few things that we just spoke about?
Laura, in the past, I think Becky specifically kept a running tally on draft versions.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
If you don't mind doing that.
Just on the percentage increase or a variance column overall?
Variance column.
Yes.
Kind of spoiled, it's nice, I mean, because, you know, we go through four drafts, it's nice to know.
Yes.
What would change?
What would change? I do that in the other schools, and I actually was going to do that here, but I had another meeting with an administrator that went a little long today, but I apologize, next month I will. First draft, just to give you some idea, not the line by line, but your first draft was at 2.88% increase proposed, of course, these are just drafts, and this one is representing a 3.9% increase. And that is the budget increase, not the netted spending, and we all know that the netted spending is now what they vote on on town meeting.
Don't we go back to central office, supervisor, whatever?
Yes.
It's really the special ed, it's had the big jump, right?
Yes, and a lot of that is salaries and benefits, and then the rest, of course, is just based on student needs, what's written in the IEPs and the percentage of special ed students.
Because we've already made the transfer of previous budgets of salary, right? So it's not like two years ago, what we did, we said, okay, you're gonna see an increase in the SU budget, but Swanton Elementary was reduced.
That's already happened.
That's in the past, that's all about.
So, yeah, the only thing you see at your local, in your local special ed lines is your support staff, because that has not yet been centralized.
And is it, is it, has it taken a position on the, with us?
The support staff?
Yeah.
It's not part of the statute at the moment, but they have identified that the purpose of the centralization, of course, is to try to save money, and it's difficult to do that when support staff is still at the local level, but everything else is centralized.
I was talking simultaneously, it was last year, well, we're near the end of the session, they have too many other things on the plate, don't be surprised if that doesn't come back.
I wouldn't be surprised. I think that once Act 46 map is completed, some of that, I think they might then look at who still has an SU model and look at what it was addressing then. I wouldn't be surprised with the special ed financial options.
There'll be, like you were just mentioning, over the next four years, there will be many, many changes to the way that special ed instruction is given and the financing will be changing from a reimbursement model completely to a block grant model, so schools will get an allocation, and that's what you get. So lots of things to change in special ed. I did wanna mention, I'm sorry, Becky and I attended a VASBO meeting, which is the Vermont Association of School officials meeting that we attend once a month, and it's really our hub for information, all the AOE reps are there, Vermont School Boards Association, the superintendents association, everyone. Numbers that we need to create your projected tax rate will be very late this year, and you're basically being told to, that we'll get them when we get them, and that's just the way it's, so things like the yield and equalized pupil numbers that we need, I will get them to you and I will do those projections as soon as I possibly can, but--
So the last week of January, we should all keep our calendars free?
I'm hoping it's before the last week of January, since most books go to print the second week of January, if we're in our current structure, but I just wanted to make you aware that, of course, we will do our best, but we can only do with what we have, so.
Has anybody determined, what date do we have to have our warning, mostly about the end of January?
Yes.
Any other questions, budget or otherwise, for Laura? I guess keep up the good work. Keep the numbers low.
I would say one of the hardest things I see from your perspective is supervising those people that work under you in the central office, they really need supervision.
Oh, is that?
That hurts, that's true. Now, it looks like a great--
We have an amazing team, incredibly hardworking team.
My understanding is everybody works under the business manager.
Everybody?
Everybody.
That's what I heard when I was--
I do have--
That's right.
Who handles the money handles the power.
All right, I think we'll move along then to principals report. We have Mr. Palmer, Jen Sorewitz.
I'll be somewhat quick. We, on November 1st, we held our, we had a community forum here, we have a series of them, there's five of them, I believe, total. It's called Coffee and Conversation with the MBU leadership team, and on November 1st, we hosted several parents who came in, sort of few actually. We talked everything from grading, school safety, programming, program studies, goes from 7:30 in the morning to about 8:15. So anybody's welcome to come on in. The next one is scheduled for Thursday, December 20th. We also have one January 31st, March 28th, and May 2nd. So those are the others that we have coming up.
Dan, I think that's an excellent idea, but how is it promoted and advertised? I know it's probably in schools for the parents, it's okay, but, you know, there are a few of us old timers, and there are more old timers in downtown coffee shops in Swanton, that it would be good for them to know, even if they don't come, it'd be good for them to know that there's an opportunity, rather than sitting there and rousing it, we never hear anything and nobody ever wants it.
We do put it out on social media, and I know that not everybody may be on social media.
That might be true. I mean, I am, but many of the people, my age group--
And I believe we also put it out on our calendar as well, it goes out to parents.
What about using that sign down in the park in Hygie and Swanton?
That for sure.
Certainly look into that, yeah. Again, the gym, I know Paul's talked a little bit about it, John's talked a little bit about it, we're looking to have our grand reopening on November 26th. That'll be an assembly here for all students and faculty, and everybody here is invited as well. We are going to have an open gym for the community, and that's going to be on December 1st from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. as well, so anybody can kind of drop in, see what we've done. It's very impressive. We have our annual Veterans Day assembly here, November 9th, down in the Treyhan Theater. Kathleen Hoffman does a great job, year in, year out, organizing that. Aaron Garso and the band do a great job, they play the, a little snippet of each armed services--
Hold the anthem?
Anthem, yeah, I guess is what I was looking for. And anybody, what's great is that anybody who has a family member that's in that branch, they all stand up during that time. It's a huge impact to see the number of people within our, just the, for faculty and staff and students that are impacted by that, so it's a, it's a good portion of our population. SAT reimbursement, we're excited to announce that MBU has applied for and received a federal grant to reimburse all students taking the SAT here. We've purchased, or we pursue these funds to promote equity and opportunity for all of our students. And obviously, it's usually taken in 10th grade, some also take it in, I'm sorry, 11th grade and 12th grade as well, but the PSAT is mainly in 10th grade. Professional learning, MBU, October 29th, hosted the first workshop to support teachers with a new Marzano focused evaluation model. Our older coaches, Julie Curtis and Sarah Gates, provided the session here for teachers across the supervisory union. And on Monday, coming up Monday, the 19th, professional staff will be participating in the in-service day here as well. There's a series of activities going on from a bleeding prevention training put on by Northwest Medical Center, which are gonna provide some gear for us around that, they just have to provide the training. just have to provide the training. And faculty will also be participating in the Franklin County Interagency Trauma Survey. And the afternoon workshops are going to be targeted around social, emotional learning, proficiency-based learning, and our MTSS or multi-tiered support systems.
I have a few more things.
I like getting that, I really do, I appreciate getting that.
I've had these for you since September, but I just cleaned my office yesterday, so now you're getting them, or today, actually, this morning, all those together. This is the literary magazine that was published last spring, so it includes student work. It is a, it is a faculty-advised but completely student-run publication, student service editors, and they provide the samples of work. So we had some extra copies, and I thought you might be interested in seeing some of the things that our students are producing. I have more gifts, I'm going to make Mr. Palmer work and pass out things. MB Unity Decal for you. Alyssa Urban was here earlier this year, I can't remember if it was the September meeting or, must have been September, and she shared with you the MB Unity project that she's working on through her role in fellowship. So decal for you, and we probably have a few extras if you want to take one to share, to share. She also has, she wrote a little update that I'll share a little bit with you from, and then I'll send it to you electronically as well. And then I also have a paper version of the survey that's been distributed throughout our faculty, staff, and we've been distributing it electronically so far through the community, and also went home in report cards. So, some of the things that have been happening with this project is that she's so focused on really making sure that she's informing all the stakeholders within the building about the project, but now she's going to be extending out beyond MBU. And so after the Thanksgiving break, they're going to be, steering committee has identified key people, locations, organizations to network with, and she's going to be focusing her energies on that after Thanksgiving. We've had two nice articles, one in the Messenger last week about MB Unity, and then Today's County Courier has an article as well. So I haven't seen the Courier article yet, but if you get the Courier, or if you are somewhere where the Courier is for sale, I encourage you to pick it up, I did not see it on their website. And then there's a website that I'll send you the link for as well. So she, I, she would like you to complete the survey, if you'd like to take the survey and share it with anybody else who's part of the MBU community, she would welcome those. And...
Where should we leave them for her?
I'm happy to take them, or if, you know, they're going to be returned to the front desk at school, we'll make sure that they get to the right spot if it's not something that folks want to do tonight.
Is she putting them in places around town?
That's a lot of the work that she's going to be doing after Thanksgiving, she's got a full schedule of places she's going to be visiting.
Many people stop by the Town Clerk's Office, Village Clerk, to sign petitions for people who are going for office, usually, and other...
Might be a good place to stack, I'll let her know.
I saw it on Twitter, but I was like, oh, what's that?
She's very active on social media.
Yeah, and John got it too, which he never gets anything, so he's like, whatever she's doing, she's doing the right thing to get new people.
Thank you very much. Something to straight up to the superintendent's report.
So, October was a very busy month, particularly for the, always busy for the business audit. The HR department was working very hard, particularly in getting ready for open enrollment, and of course, going through a process to choose a new third-party administrator, the company that manages the health reimbursement accounts for our staff, and that's been a very difficult situation for teachers and staff for the past year, and I went to as many open enrollment meetings in the past few weeks that I could, I was able to come to this one at MBU, and it was just wonderful when they introduced the woman from Healthy Dollars, she was applauded, and no one ever has, you know, people, it just shows how relieved everyone was. It was just wonderful, and staff, I know, are just so appreciative of that change. So that was a very big piece of work, and now they're going to be working on getting all of the data input for the Affordable Care Act website, which is another big piece of work. So they're always very busy. I think everyone here has heard that October was not great news in the arena of Act forty-six. The decision to, the provisional decision to merge Hyde, Franklin, Swanton, and MBU, we talked about last time, that was at the October seventeenth meeting. The October twenty-ninth meeting, the decision was made for Sheldon to become part of the Northern Mountain Valley Unified School District in Franklin Northeast, and they would be joining Burgers, Burgersfield, it's a new town. Bakersfield and Murcher, it's a merger. Oh, boy. Murcher and Bakersfield voted already, so they have a transitional voluntary board right now that exists. Montgomery and Sheldon were determined to merge with them. The final report will come out by the twenty-eighth, the meeting in November, oh, I think they met the fifteenth, I think it is. So we'll see what comes out of that very soon, probably in the morning we'll have emails about it. So we did talk at the Supervisory Union Board meeting last week about the timeline for transition, and Sheldon has been meeting a lot because they're discussing the bond, so we've sort of had back-to-back meetings with Sheldon for a bit too. So their process would look a little different, but the timeline for a new organization would be a very tight one for the MBU district. However, we also have a lawsuit that has been signed on by Hyde and Franklin and other schools throughout the state, and we anticipate that there will be an injunction, so we don't know what that means, except that we have to move forward under the law until there's an injunction. So we will likely sort of be preparing for two for the settlement.
Sounds easy.
Absolutely not, nothing about change in governance is easy, even when you have people volunteering to do it in two years. So we will do our level best to do everything we can. It's been difficult because folks want to know things.
Right.
We want to inform the community, and right now it's hard to inform people when things are sort of up in the air.
At what point do we have to come up with a interim board, but a transitional board?
That is within sixty days, you have to have an rehabilitation meeting. You have to warn it within thirty. So I expect that litigation would be filed within that first thirty-day window to stop that happening. But it might, it depends on whether it's successful or not, or whether injunctions...
Who's up for reelection? I am in Swanton, if I decide to run.
Who's it?
You, Richard? Who's in Franklin?
Uh, I think Bob might be. I thought Berger might be.
No, Bob Berger is not on the review board.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I was thinking about...
Could it be Eric?
Right.
Must be Eric.
Yes, probably.
Yeah, it must be.
I would guess John, because Eric's very new.
Well, that's true.
He wasn't quite...
That's why I'm wondering, is there a gap there?
So I asked the question at the state of what we do, say there, say the lawsuit doesn't happen, or it doesn't affect us, or whatever, a straightforward timeline, you would have a transition board in effect by January, you would have, that one of their primary jobs would be to get folks on the ballot for a March town meeting vote, and you would not have a budget for a town meeting, that would come afterwards. So I asked the question, well, local boards are still doing business, what do we do about the folks whose terms are up? And I think the easiest thing to do is that the rest of the board appoints the current board members to the vacancies for the duration of the three months. I think it would be very confusing to the voters to vote for Don Collins for three months and then vote for somebody for the new district board, I'd be confused. So I know that when Franklin Central had a transition board, they did it a little differently, but they had elected people and they did it a year ahead of time, announced how long the terms would be. So, we don't have that luxury. I think the cleanest thing for us to do is appoint people to their own seats for three months when they're vacancies.
Here's your chance, then, I should be wanting to duck so I'll scope it. Woke up one night.
Right, I'm trying to find my way out.
So there will be, the next SU meeting, we will have a conversation on the default articles of agreement and what they look like, and we can discuss, as we get farther along, this board may want to hear some of that information as well, because not everybody here is on the SU board, so...
And those articles are, there are articles out there.
Yes.
We can work with those, and then, but we don't have, I'm sure we can't do everything we want, we can't just do what we want.
Well, what's nice about, well, there's nothing nice about things being imposed on you, but the positive thing is they have listened to people in this sense, and they have ensured that Swanton, Hyde Gate, and Franklin will have two members on for each community, and they have put in some pretty strong provisions about you can't change grade levels in the school building, and you can't close a school, and then we can amend afterwards, whether it's through a vote of the community, or for the most, that's, the big ones have to be through the community, we can make things stronger for the future of the law. There are some things we can't vote on because they're the law.
Right.
There are some things, like you can, or it can name itself if it wants to, you don't have to vote the voters for that, but for the big things, you have to go to the communities, but you could make it so, in order to close a school in a community, that community would have to have a majority vote. So things like that can go into articles to make them even stronger. The easiest way to do that is to let these be imposed upon us, and then have a thoughtful and community-involved discussion for the future about how to make them fit our schools and our community.
How does this all take place with, like, Swanton is Australian ballot, and Hyde is from the floor, and I think Franklin's on the floor, how does that all work?
Well, it is something that has to be voted on, so when you organize the new district, sixty days after the state board announces, you bring in community member, it's a town meeting-style meeting, you have a moderator and the whole nine yards, and you have the town clerks checking off the voter list, so that we all come in here as voters, they swear in the new transition board.
So, so is it something like MBU started out?
Yes, very much so. So, however, it's, it's, the towns have to vote at that organizational meeting on how they want to do business. Do they want to do Australian ballots for just the budget? Do they want to do it for all items? Do they want to do it at their town meeting, the way Sheldon does, they do Australian voting at their town meeting? So there, there are a variety of things you can do, so we want to find out what the options are and sort of prepare the board's scenario, A, B, and C, so that the community then can vote on, because none of it is a great, is easy. People want to have informed voters, and they like their town meeting. If you just do Australian ballot, then you can't talk about anything at the town meeting, so, on the other hand, Australian ballot gets a lot more voters. So, and when you have a co-mingle vote, which is what it will be, it can, it can be a challenge. So, but that's something the electorate will vote on in that organizational meeting, and that's how you'll conduct business with them.
Yeah, that'll be interesting. It'll be a fun ride.
So I think that's really all, if anybody has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, and I, oh, no, I promised Greg something. I looked right up, and there you were. So did you all get an article from Greg? I thought I would share it, we don't, we don't have a lot of time, but I do think it's very interesting. It's a Mirror Times article about the gap now between rich and poor children and their access to technology. It used to be we worried about children growing up without internet access, children growing up without access to screens and computers, and that they would not have as much of an advantage as students whose families can afford those things. The trend is now shifting, and so that families of means are keeping screens away from their children, and that they're watching less television, that they're on the computer less, that they're having more hands-on and experiential learning. I mean, I think about Jason Barney, and the opportunity he is giving to kids to go to museums, before there were like so many devices, and families that can do it make sure that their students, their children do go to the Maritime Museum, that they do go out and do hands-on activities, rather than just spend time with screens. So it's a very interesting article about, and it actually makes the point that all of this technology, that I love, by the way, I'm not anti-technology, I was of the computer programming club back when they were amber screens, but the, it has been an interesting experiment in how all this technology impacts brain development in children. Greg, I don't know if you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I thought that was a very interesting thing, that the more affluent schools limit the technology tremendously.
Yes.
As it says, some places it's banned. It's, I think it's really interesting.
I spent a decade getting money so everybody could have their own.
What's that, Don?
I said, we spent a decade trying to find funding so every student could have access to it.
Absolutely.
And I think that it would be a disservice to our students to not have technology and use it to collaborate and to be creative and communicate. However, what was so exciting about what Jason presented is that we have to have a balance of experiences for students. Now, all of our kids have access to a smartphone and other technology, they don't necessarily get to go and see artifacts in the ground and those things. I found it really interesting that Utah is talking about a hundred percent online preschool. That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard in my life. If somebody used to do preschool, I just think that's, how you do floor time over the computer, I just don't know. I just thought it was a really nice article, and it reminded me, one of the things I used to do is a newsletter, curating different articles and sharing them with board members. If you're in... if you're interested in reading them or not. Just because we tend to use a lot of jargon, and we talk about initiatives a lot, because there are a lot of initiatives. It's sometimes nice to give people articles that talk about how important project-based learning is, or proficiency, or hands-on learning opportunities, and multi-cured systems of supports. We talk about these things, but it's sometimes nice to have articles. So I will see if I can find another platform that can do that. The one I used to use is no longer free, it costs a lot. Surprise, surprise.
It must be good.
Anyway, thank you for that, Greg. I enjoyed that. And the leadership team actually enjoyed it, too.
I liked that article so much that I printed it so I could read it.
You should just get the New York Times to deliver it to your house. All right.
That was the end of your...
That was the end, sorry.
Any other questions for the superintendent? I guess hearing none, we'll go to new business, which is probably from the superintendent as well. Is negotiations update? Is there... is there... well, it's probably not a lot of open session stuff.
Not a lot of open session, but I can say that Greg and I and some of our colleagues attended a negotiation strategy meeting. It was very positive, and we have some news to share with the board.
And we'll have to wait till the end of executive session, but it's...
There was one thing I meant during the principal's review. Whatever happened to our student rep?
I talked to her...
Yeah. She emailed me today. She was unable to come because of work. And she intends to come to next meeting. I made sure she had the agenda ahead of time. And I'm going to meet with her before our December meeting to go over a little information on what it is to be on the board.
Maybe we should encourage her to get a backup, so that if she can't make it, the students do have representation.
That would be nice.
Even if we had two or three lined up, they're going to be busy.
That would be wonderful.
See Mr. Palmer and...
The writing thing's down.
He deserves it. All right. Meeting dates. Now, I see the first one here, that's been changed, is Franklin Northwest.
Yep, it looks like we're going to try and hold that meeting on December 10th. Instead, the whole business office, pretty much, is going to be locked away in Killington, working on the new chart of accounts that the state is saying they have to do. So, given that it's a budget season, it makes sense to have the business office present, so...
Now, Highgate will still be...
It should still be at Highgate.
It should be available until the 10th.
As far as I know. No one has said otherwise.
All right.
The 20th is our next board meeting.
Right, 20th, it'll be MBU, 7 o'clock.
I would ask that some way it be set up so that I can participate by phone, that I have a commitment, a work commitment, and I can't be here. I don't like misboarding students, but it's out of my control, and I have to go. So... and I talked to you briefly about changing the date, but I think that's probably really difficult to do.
It's tough, too.
So, you know, I don't know how I can call in, but...
We could Skype you in and put you right on the big screen, John.
Sure. I don't know how it'll work, but I would like to find a way to restart it.
Yeah. Strap a swivel to it, darling. All right. So now we're at anticipated executive session, which is not anticipated any longer. We decided we're there. So we have some budgetary issues to discuss and some negotiations updates, and that's probably... probably going to be...
I think that's it.
The budget related to personnel?
It's related to positions that premature knowledge would put the board at a substantial disadvantage. Are we talking about it?
So, I guess...
Jim, did you want to say something? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, I'm fine. I was just waiting for it. I just... now, has everybody been with what you sent me, Jen?
I don't know that. I don't know that we have.
Sent the links to board members?
I have not. I have not. So I have been meeting with the Ag Department, and we did two sets of surveys of students, one of all high school students in grades nine, 10, and 11, where we asked them about topics that interested them, skills that they'd like to develop, and whether they'd be interested in taking Ag classes, what they're planning on doing after high school. The results were really interesting. Very high interest in maple sugaring, public speaking, time management, things like that. It was interesting to see what kids identified. And then we surveyed our Level One and Intro students in the Ag program currently about their plans to take Level Two and their interest in it being a longer length of time than it is currently and interest in having an integrated math or science credit. So we have some data to kind of make some programmatic decisions around.
She shared a link with me, and I shared that with all my committee members. I did get a little feedback, and they said they were... One of mine that didn't come to our meeting that night, she says, "Everything sounds good to me." She says, "But oops, Jen." I had to tell her who you were. But I'm going to take it as not getting any reply, that they were happy with what they read. And we'll just continue with the emails and keeping people up the scope. And I wasn't planning on a meeting till next year, maybe January, February. That'll maybe finalize it up, and we can have definite answers for them. So I would think that would be a good way to go. But yeah, if you want... Jen has the link, you know, connect up with her and get, you know, that survey. Yeah, it is very interesting. You look at the different things they were asked and the different levels that kids go into. And then the other thing is, I don't know if anybody noticed the banner up on the Cassidy Field? If anybody knows the Cassidy Field? Heather Bissett of H&amp;V, Greenhouse Air, she supplied a banner for... A temporary banner for the field. If anybody hasn't seen it, this is what it looks like.
It's great.
The...
I have seen it. I go by it every day.
You can pass this one that way.
Did you even see it then?
I have seen it.
There's plan on... there's plan on a permanent sign. I believe they're going to do a permanent sign sometime next year. There was like a two-week period that you have for permanent, and they've been complaining about the sign. And what we're thinking is, right now it's on stakes up there. We're thinking about putting in permanent posts, applying the temporary sign to that. And the new sign is going to be the size of the temporary. So the post will be there. When we do hit the new sign, it'll just go where the temporary is. But that's a good... good advertisement, I think, for us.
So you're going to get an old beat-up tractor out there and have a sign out of there?
Mr. Meche told me once he tried to get the old tractor in front of Andy's aunt. She didn't want no part of it. So he said, "Okay, thank you," and walked away, but... excuse me. So yeah, things are moving along, and I'm hoping everybody is brought up and kept up in speed and just keep doing like we are, Jen. I think it's working good. And like you say, I anticipate a meeting till January, February. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Jen.
You came back in so quietly. I didn't know if that was...
I saw him. I saw him, and I get distracted up here, too.
I stepped out to catch up with Jen. I haven't seen John in a while.
Do you need a motion for executive session?
We do, and I'm just wondering, we're going to be taking a little break, I think, before executive session to go to visit the gym. So, I guess we still... I guess we'll just be doing that in executive session. We make the motion now, so... But I think we'll make the motion on camera and everything, so we will... I would entertain a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of personnel and negotiation.
I'll move that.
And we invite Laura and Julie and looking at our administrators. Dan, yeah, I guess we would want Dan there. Dan, we're going to invite you.
So invite Jen and then give her the option to go home if she doesn't want to go.
Right.
I guess I would ask if you wanted some... we can chat about whether or not you want me to stay around some of the personnel questions.
Right. I guess we can... we can invite Jen as well if we decide we don't need her. We can let her go. So, all right. So anything on that motion, as jumbled as it was?
I did. I moved it.
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry. Don made the motion, Richard seconded. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?